Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Let's call a meeting to order. And for everybody, please turn off your cellphones. Mr. Cato, any agenda changes proposed?
There are no agenda changes. I do have an announcement once the proper time.
Excuse me, Chair Thompson?
Yeah.
May I take the roll call first?
We don't need one. If it's not on the agenda, we don't need it.
It's never on the agenda, but it is customary. I would recommend it.
All right, here goes. Commissioner Bartlet, absent. Commissioner Jacobs?
Here.
Commissioner Justice, absent. Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner White? Vice Chair Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Larson, absent.
I do have an announcement. Some time ago, before I became the senior planner, there was an item before you. It was the UCSB Long Range Development Plan, EIR, which we brought to you for comments. You gave comments. We sent a letter. They have recirculated sections of that EIR, and our staff, our environmental staff, is looking at that. And they will be sending comments again. They have changed some things to make it better, so we think that's great. And some things, they haven't changed much at all, so we still have some concerns. So the letter that we send is going to be essentially having the same comments as before for those items that haven't changed. Just wanted to let you know that that's going on.
Will we be having another review of their plan, or not?
We were not planning on that because it hasn't substantially changed. This is a recirculated draft EIR, and they haven't responded to our comments yet. They will do that in the final. That's they have to, CEQA requires it. So we weren't just going to bring that back.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Danny, regarding the Long Range Plan for UCSB, we will see it again, as you said, right? Or not?
Well...
And then when does it become approved by the regents? That's what I'd really like to know. Is there a certain point at which it becomes confirmed as the Long Range Plan for UCSB?
Okay, first question first. I was saying to the chair that we were not going to bring the comments for the recirculated EIR back. I actually don't know if the city will see that Long Range Development Plan. CEQA does require that the EIR be certified, and usually that happens somewhere near the adoption of whatever is being reviewed. But I will write that down and get that back to you.
The reason I'm interested, I think the university is self-certifying. I think they make the EIR, and then they certify the EIR. So, once they get a final draft, it's not likely to be changed very much in the certification process. But one of the aspects of it was potentially related to regional housing needs assessment numbers. This last round of housing assessment, there was no anticipation of growth in the unincorporated county, which would be UCSB. So at some point, when it gets certified, I hope staff will take note of that regarding how we treat our allocation for regional housing numbers. Thanks.
Okay. Danny, any other items, announcements, or appeals?
There is an appeal of a staff hearing officer. I'm not sure if I mentioned this, but there is an appeal of a staff hearing officer's decision 2140 Mission Ridge Road, and it is scheduled on your agenda for May 7th. It's a modification.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, this is the time where we will take comments from the public pertaining to items not on the agenda. We have a public speaker request from Mr. Cahan.
Yes, about two things. My name is James Cahan. I'm a representative of Friends of Outer State Street. Several years ago, you handled a case, you reversed the staff hearing officer on Century 21 case. You were unanimous. You evaluated the law properly. The council reversed you. The Friends of Outer State Street filed to the Superior Court, and we were not successful there. I filed the appellate's opening brief in the Court of Appeal, and I've been looking over a lot of things since then. I want to thank all of you for doing the right thing then. You followed the law. I think the city council ignored the law. I can get more detailed than that in the brief. We'll address it. I've started looking at modifications in a very close way, and I think there's been an absolute abuse of the modification procedure. I understand I'll have a chance to talk about that later. You have an item on your agenda that 15 modifications were approved by the staff hearing officer. And my objection is, is one, I don't think modifications are lawful. Secondly, how they're done, I object to, that it just is a conclusionary statement that you approved the modifications here, and I requested several years ago. List the seven resolutions out. List what the seven properties are. List what the individual modifications are. But when I wrote the law for the Planning Commission to get out of the modification business for the modification hearing officer, there was the thought that this was going to be a minor thing. There'd be a few heard. It was going to lighten your caseload. We never conceived of an idea of 15 modifications being granted at one staff hearing meeting. Now, I am going to make a request later that this be brought up to the Planning Commission. They address it. As Danny said earlier, the Mission Ridge Road modification is already on appeal, and I think the other ones should be addressed, and I think it would be appropriate to address them. I think you did the right thing. I thank you for looking at the law several years ago and doing the right thing, and I feel that we have a good chance of reversing the decision here locally. If anybody has any questions, one other final thing. When I went over the brief, and I was looking at the record, the city attorney says, Mr. Vincent said at that hearing, that you couldn't enforce the law because a building permit has been issued. And the city attorney cited a case, Anderson v. La Mesa. That is not the law. It has been overruled in this district. What that means is...
Mr. Cahan, we're not in the law business here, so why not save that for your court hearing?
Well, I will just conclude very quickly. I will give you a copy of the case. You can look at it and see what it is. There's more authority there, and I'm certain Mr. Vincent can address it also, and Mr. Wiley.
Okay.
Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you very much.
And thank you again for looking at the law briefing.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wants to peek on any items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, we'll close that and go to the first item. Environmental hearing on the City of Santa Barbara Housing and Redevelopment Agency Amendment to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Mr. Cato?
Stephen Falschich from our Housing and Redevelopment Agency will be giving the staff report.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Mr. Chair, this involves the revisions to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that was adopted by the city in 2004. The current Inclusionary Housing Ordinance only applies to residential projects of 10 or more ownership units. It does not apply to rental, and it also applies to condo conversions as well as new developments. There's a 15% inclusionary requirement, and the requirement is to provide units that are affordable for sale to middle-income households. There's a density bonus by right for all of the required inclusionary units, and there's an option of paying an INLU fee instead of building the units on-site. This has been in the city, these revisions have been in the city review process for years, actually. It's been a long process. At first, council referred this item to the Housing Policy Steering Committee, and it was because it was council's perception that the existing ordinance didn't do enough to address the impacts of projects that were fewer than 10 units. As I mentioned, the current ordinance on the books now only applies to projects of 10 or more. And so they referred it to the city's Housing Policy Steering Committee, which is comprised of Planning Commission members as well as city council members. And the Housing Policy Steering Committee met twice and made recommendations to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission met and made recommendations to the city council to adopt the ordinance with more changes than are before you today. For example, I mentioned there was a 15% inclusionary requirement. The Planning Commission recommended to council, based on staff's recommendation, that the percentage be higher than 15% for projects in certain downtown areas where they proved to be more economically feasible to impose a larger requirement. In fact, yes, that's my next point, is that it was to increase the percentage to 20% in some areas, and to increase the percentage to 20% for larger projects in all areas, and to lower the threshold to two units, and require a 10% inclusionary for five through nine units, and it would just be 5% for two, three, or four units. The council referred this to ordinance committee, and then returned back to council. Council did not accept all of these, as I said. They did not agree to change the inclusionary percentage above 15% at this point. They said that could be a consideration for the update to the general plan through Plan Santa Barbara. Also, they did not adopt a 10% inclusionary for five through nine units. They kept it at 5%. So that's one-third of the requirement that it would be for projects of 10 or more. So, this is, yeah, the 5% requirement would be, for two through nine units, would be, you could meet it by just paying a prorated INLU fee. So I'll get into that, too. So it returned to council. Council said keep it at 15% for two through nine units, a 5% prorated INLU fee. Council referred it to ordinance committee, went back to council for adoption in September 2008. And at the second hearing, after introduction and when it was up for adoption, there was, in the public comment, concern was expressed by a citizen about the environmental review process and the fact that Planning Commission, although they had seen the project with bigger changes than were being recommended or adopted by council, it hadn't seen every change. And so the item was continued, and as a result, it was referred back to Planning Commission for Planning Commission's review and eventual recommendation to city council. And also, there were concerns about environmental review, and the environmental review process was reopened, and we're back with a report on that today as well. So, this is for your review of the changes that were proposed back in September to the city council. So, we now have a completed mitigated negative declaration, and so let me go through the changes one by one. This is a change that council has recommended and had agreed to adopt, to lower the project size threshold from 10 units to two units, and to reduce the inclusionary percentage for those projects from 15% to 5% for projects of two through nine units. Projects would pay a prorated INLU fee. And the prorated INLU fee, when we took it to council, it's calculated, the INLU fee is calculated by a formula that's in the ordinance. And the formula is based on things that are subject to change. One of them was the median sale price of condominiums, two-bedroom condominiums in the city of Santa Barbara. And then that was used as a basis for estimating the development cost of a unit, and then the INLU fee would be the difference between the development cost of a unit and the price of an affordable unit. And that would, so if an affordable unit cost $100,000, and the development cost was $500,000, then the INLU fee would be $400,000. It'd be the difference between that. That would be the INLU fee for not building a unit that was required on-site. So, let's see, I'm sorry. So this is how the INLU fee was calculated at the adoption of the ordinance. And the reason I'm going into the INLU fee, it's kind of a circular way of saying that we're no longer asking for any changes to the ordinance about the INLU fee. Back in September, council did adopt a recommended change at that time, but that was based on conditions that staff had prepared and researched a year before that. And it turns out now, when we've redone the calculations, it's kind of back to where we started because of the big fluctuations in housing prices during this time. So I'm just going to go through this. Basically, your staff report is not accurate. Your staff report that you received was done prior to my recalculation of the INLU fee, and when I did that last week, I realized that we're back closer to where we started from, and there's really no need for this change. So there's a change in the staff recommendation. It doesn't change the environmental review because the change is very slight from what was the basis of the environmental review. So let me just go over this quickly. At the adoption, the median price of a two-bedroom condo was $500,000 in Santa Barbara, and that was over the prior 12-month period. Half of those two-bedroom condos sold for less than that, and half sold for more than that. By the formula, the development cost, the hidden assumption here is that there's a 15% developer profit in that condo fee, so that it actually costs the developer 85% of that amount to build it. So, we called the development cost 85% of $500,000, or $425,000. And then we looked at the gap between that and the price of an affordable low-income sale unit, which was $115,000. So we came up with an INLU fee of $310,000 in 2004. Back in January of 2008, though, over a year ago, we recalculated the numbers, and in the big housing boom, the median price of a two-bedroom condo had gone up by $150,000 in that four-year period, or three and a half years, maybe. So, we subtracted the development, then 85% of that was the development cost. The price of a low-income unit had gone down because of various factors, and so if you take the difference between the price of a low-income unit and the $552,000 development cost, you got an INLU fee of $473,000. So staff looked at that and said, wow, that's quite a bit more than was originally anticipated. What would be a reasonable response to that? And this is the change that was proposed by staff and approved by Planning Commission. The Housing Policy Steering Committee, ordinance committee, and city council came up with a fee that was about 15% higher, I think, than the fee in 2004. And the only change was, you know, we still use $650,000 as the sale price, but instead of subtracting the price of a low-income unit, we subtracted the price of a moderate-income unit, and we suggested that change be made in the formula, and that would give an INLU fee of $354,000. So that's what was in your staff report, and it seemed like more in line with the intent of the level of the INLU fee that was initially set. But, a week or two ago, I reran the numbers and found out that, to really nobody's surprise, the median price of a two-bedroom condo has come down by $125,000 in the last 12 or 14 months. And we're back to about $525,000 as the median price, so the development cost is 85% of that. The new price for a low-income unit would be $90,000, and subtracting that, we come up with an INLU fee of $356,000, which is just $2,000 higher than it was when it was looked at with the new formula through the review process of these ordinance changes a year ago. So basically, what I'm saying is, never mind, we don't need to change the formula that's already in the ordinance. What it does show is that that yields a number that's fairly volatile, and so that's something I don't know how to work on smoothing that out. And, you know, I guess one thing, eventually, if we could look at the median sale price over the last three years or something rather than the last year. But I'm not proposing that. I'm just saying that we are dealing with a more volatile number. It's a number that will change over time. But it's volatile when the market is volatile, and I don't think we're going to see the kind of increases or decreases as we've had under this extraordinary last few years. So, anyway. So right now, the INLU fee would be $356,000, and that's a number that is prorated when we're talking about applying it to projects of two through nine units, and I'll explain that. So, it's prorated because there's a 5% inclusionary requirement. So I just added this bottom row here, and it shows that 5% of $354,000 was $17,700 for each unit that's built. If there's a 5% inclusionary requirement, then you pay 5% of the INLU fee for every unit that you're building. There's an exception to that that I'll mention in a minute. But, the environmental review assumed an INLU fee of $17,700 per unit, and right now, the recalculation shows an INLU fee, 5% of $17,800. So that's just a couple of percent, a very few percent difference, and in staff's opinion, that does not affect any of the environmental review that's happened. So, this is the change number three. There'd be a fee required for smaller projects. The prorated fee would be $17,800 per market rate unit for projects of two through nine units. But, and this came out of ordinance committee last summer, exempt the first unit from the fee if the project has two, three, or four units, and it's new construction. And the rationale for this is, well, you probably already have the right to build one unit, or maybe you already have one unit on the site if it's a small project like this. So, a person who has a unit and wants to build one or two ownership units, you know, on the site as condos, that first unit would be exempt from the fee under these proposed ordinances. But only, that would not occur if you had a four, you know, two, three, or four-unit apartment building, and you wanted to convert it to condos. There would still be the requirement of $17,800 for each of those units. So it only applies for new construction. Another change is expanding the allowed uses of INLU fees. Currently, the city really doesn't have a source of funds to use for buying back middle and upper-middle-income units that are in default. And we can do that with moderate-income units or low-income units because the Redevelopment Agency funding or CDBG funding, they allow the uses for that, but not for middle-income or upper-middle income. So this, using the collected INLU fees for that would really help staff in assuring that those units aren't lost when they go into foreclosure. The affordability isn't lost when it goes into foreclosure. What we typically would do is, we have a lien against the property with our affordability covenant, so we could exercise our option to purchase the unit prior to it going into foreclosure. Or we could go to the foreclosure sale and bid on the unit, and we've done that as well. We buy the unit, take it, pay off the default, fix up the unit to a sellable condition, and then resell the unit to an eligible buyer, and that repays the fund. In other words, it doesn't end up costing, we price the unit so that we get all of our money back. But this would allow the city to use the funds for that purpose. Also, subsidizing the development of middle-income and upper-middle-income housing for local employees. If a project came up like that, and they couldn't make the units conform to the city's actual definition of upper-middle income or middle-income, we could use the funds for that as well. The other change, as I've been talking about middle-income, just to put a number to that, a two-bedroom middle-income unit would sell for $250,000 about today. We also have an upper-middle income category, and what we are saying is that, instead of providing 15% middle-income, if a project comes in, and for instance, an employer-sponsored housing, and provides 30% to upper-middle income, then we'll consider that equivalent, and it'll be exempt from the inclusionary ordinance. So that's another new change. The sale price of an upper-middle income two-bedroom would be about $350,000 as compared to $250,000 for an upper-middle income unit. So we thought that there would be equivalent benefit. It would meet the needs of employers who want to develop housing that might be for people in that upper-middle income range rather than the middle-income range. Another minor change, to make it less of a burden on the developers, mom-and-pop developers typically of two, three, or four units, we would delay the due date for payment of the INLU fee till just prior to building permit, so that when they're ready to take their financing, to pay off the construction financing from the sale of the units, the INLU fee could be due at that time. This ordinance would apply to projects that are yet to receive tentative map approval. So basically, things in the pipeline would be affected by this. But every project that's come through city planning division review has received written notice that this ordinance is under revision, and that they would be subject to the changes if they're adopted prior to their planning commission approval for subdivision map. So here's the changes, and I'll just keep them on the screen for a second and can bring the screen back up. But that basically concludes my description of the project that has received the environmental review, and I'm going to turn it over to Michael Berman, who can take the presentation from here.
Good afternoon, Chairman Thompson, members of the commission. I'm here to provide opportunity for members of the commission and the public to comment on the initial study that was circulated for public review. The initial study evaluates the proposed amendment to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Amendment. The draft initial study, mitigated negative deck, was prepared and circulated on the 18th of February of this year for a 30-day public comment period. The public review period would end tomorrow, March 20th, 2009. As I mentioned, the hearing is being held to receive comments on the environmental review. Comments would be addressed in the final mitigated negative declaration. The city council may adopt the final mitigated negative declaration and approve the project. As Mr. Falschich indicated, the project amends the existing Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that applies to projects greater than nine units. It requires a fee for affordable housing units when two to nine units are proposed. The money could be used for construction of new units, or acquisition for that matter of existing units. We made some assumptions to prepare the environmental review, and we used prior data, and that data is documented in the initial study. The number of units had to be estimated. We estimated that the funds would construct up to three units every other year, that the units would likely be constructed in the downtown area, surrounding areas of the downtown, and along and around the Upper State Street area. We also assumed that the fees collected would be used within roughly two years. We provided a programmatic analysis, as no construction is proposed at this time. The initial study concluded that there are no direct significant impacts associated with the project because the project proposes to exact a fee from projects as they are approved, and so the direct impact would be... And so the direct impact would be exaction of a fee. The project could, as I mentioned earlier, be used for the construction of housing. And that, development of that housing could have some potentially significant mitigable impacts. The areas in which those impacts could occur are aesthetics, air quality, biology, cultural resources, hazards, noise, and water resources. We request that PC and the public provide their comments, preferably in writing as well. And we had to receive those comments. Mr. Folsich is here to answer any questions on the details of the project proposed. And there will be a PC hearing on April the 2nd, 2009, for the planning commission to make a recommendation regarding the inclusionary housing ordinance to the city council. The planning commission will not be adopting the mitigated negative deck. That will be occurring at the city council hearing. And that concludes my presentation. We'd like to receive all the comments that are available. Thank you.
Michael, your last point there, we're going to have another hearing on the April the 2nd to make a recommendation. I thought that was according to our staff report, part of the meeting today.
This hearing today is just to have comments on the mitigated negative deck. We are having a second hearing.
Okay.
So if that's, if staff report says that it's wrong or misleading.
Planning Commission questions for staff? Mr. White?
Chair, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to just fold into my comments just for simplicity's sake, if I may.
Okay. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Folsich, I noticed on your chart where you determine the amount of the in lieu fee. In one case, you used moderate income unit price to deduct, and then, and then the others, you use the low income. What determines which you use? On the surface, it looked arbitrary.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Lodge, the, you're right, there was a mention of the two different ones. And I did say never mind. And the never mind applied to using the moderate. That was basically staff's recommendation at one point in order to bring the in lieu fee more in line with the number that was in effect with the original ordinance. In, in effect, it was a way to avoid an in lieu fee that was, you know, 40% higher than it had been four years ago. And because that was due to such an increase in, in the housing prices that we, we just basically changed that target income in the, in the ordinance to get the number that was more reasonable, or, or more in line, I should say, with what the, the ordinance originally said. So I raised that number because that was staff's recommendation to the, throughout this process. But it is no longer the recommendation because the resulting in lieu fee due to the changes in the housing market sense have brought it back down to within $2,000 of what it would have been a year ago if, if we had changed it. So I know it's very confusing, and I'd be happy to go back to that chart and look, look at it. But as I said, I, I entered, I, I kind of introduced all of that confusion because I wanted to be real clear that what you're seeing is different by two words from the, from the recommendation that went to council back in September. And those two words are the difference between low income and moderate income.
I had another question. You mentioned foreclosures. And I know the process, the range within which people qualify for one of the affordable units is, is very specific and based on the ability to pay. But I take it we have, and I, I guess I would think, oh, maybe there wouldn't be foreclosures with that kind of careful vetting of the buyer. But apparently, there are foreclosures going on. Is it?
Commissioner Lodge, we've had very few, but they've occurred. We have about 350, 340 affordable units in different price ranges. And there have been circumstances where people, even though we've looked at their original loans and that, they've, they've overextended themselves and haven't been able to make their payments. I think that's been, you know, less than five times. But those would have been five units that could have been lost, and they haven't been. We've been able to purchase the units and resell them to affordable, to qualified buyers in the income categories.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Folsich, I have two questions for staff. One, would you go over the rationale for the prior to occupancy versus prior to building permit, numbers being different, two to four versus five to nine? I mean, why wouldn't they all be prior to occupancy?
Mr. Chair, the, the standard requirement for payment of any fees is prior to building permit. And that has, because of the city's experience, that that's the best time to, to require them because that's when the city really has, is holding that, something that, that the developer needs. And that's the, the building permit, you know? And if the fees aren't paid, then they can't build at all. It becomes much more problematic when you withhold it to payment of fees right prior to occupancy. Because then you've got buyers who are, who are ready to, to step in and occupy. You have, you know, a completed project sitting there that's, and it, it just is, is harder for the city to withhold the occupancy permit based on non-payment of a fee at that time. The, the exception is being made for the smaller units only, for two, three, or four units, just as a way of lessening the financial burden on the small mom and pop type developers who we think of as typically proposing unit, projects of two, three, or four units. And so it's, it's an exception being made to soften the impact on those, those only. That was an idea that came out of planning commission based on public comment. And, and I'm, I think ordinance committee and then city council thought that it was a reasonable response.
Okay, so it's more based on theory than actual practice because we haven't tried it the other way. You're saying there's more leverage earlier in the process. I'm looking at it.
Right.
Early in the process where someone's trying to get a construction loan. He's got trouble getting a construction loan since he doesn't yet have a building permit. I know we've gone into great lengths of describing a process around that. Just makes the ordinance that much more complex to deal with it. And that was the origin of my question. But, okay, I'll let that go. The other question has to do with 30% affordable units and above being exempt. You want to describe the rationale for 30%? Is, is there any methodology to have determined 30%? Or is it just a number that we thought was a good number?
Mr. Chair, the, this would apply to the existing requirements for projects of 10 or more units. And the existing requirement is 15% affordability. The thought was that having units, well, let's say the median price is 500, and let's just say $500,000. The, a, a unit that's middle income would be $250,000 below the median price. And that provides a certain amount of affordability benefit. An upper middle income unit would be, at 350,000, would be $150,000 less. So about, about half the, the below-market benefit. So it was a way of saying, if we double the number, we allow them to be sold at a higher price but still below market price, then it's not an exact number, but it was, for simplicity, we just said, double the number of, of upper middle income will have about the same public benefit as, as the 15% at middle income. That was the rationale. It also was consistent with the city's adopted affordable housing policies and procedures because, because we have those two different levels already defined. And it was in response to some concerns by developers of employer-sponsored housing that they may not want to target their middle income. They may prefer to target a greater number of upper middle income for their own employer needs. And so I think they were supportive of that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding that 30%, I was on the steering committee that looked at this so many years ago. And I also recall that the 30% number came out of discussions wherein the committee heard reports both from Mr. Folsich and from a representative who had surveyed the development community. And in short, the 30% number came out to be a kind of a fulcrum, at which point profits pretty much evaporate for, for the developer. And therefore, it really crosses that threshold into, into public benefit. So the, the surveys of the development community produced that 30% number, and it was also given in a report by Mr. Folsich along what he said. But I have a question regarding an item that perhaps should go into assumptions or under plans and policies, and I don't see it in here, and that is the sunset for the redevelopment association. Just as something that should be in the context to understand that some of our housing money comes from the RDA and that there is a sunset date for that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, open up the public comments. Mr. Jim Caldwell will be first, followed by Gilberry.
I'm Jim Caldwell. I'm here representing the Santa Barbara Board of Realtors. We have prepared a letter of our concerns about the pending activity. Rather than read the entire letter, I will let you submit that into your records. Our basic position is that we're in total opposition to lowering the threshold on this from 10 clear down to the two level. And our feeling is that anything below five is then going into the single-family area of development of real estate. Because generally speaking, when you look at lending practices, one to four is considered single-family. Anything above four is considered multifamily or developmental projects. Many of these, because you're building a second unit, third unit, granny unit, all of which are the type things that the city of Santa Barbara needs currently to meet its housing demands, many of these projects are very tight in their financing. If any of you tried to get construction financing, which I'm working on a project right now down in LA, it's virtually impossible. In fact, we've had to go to actual private funding and getting somebody to front money to create a project. That's just the nature of our current financial situation and the crisis in the country. But really, in, in true reality, we, we really would just totally discourage dropping this below the five level, simply because I think effectively you would eliminate many granny units from ever being built. You would eliminate the creation of duplexes, which are an effective use of large lots over, such as on the west side in the bath or Delevin area where you have large deep lots with a lot of space that in many cases is in disarray, that could be easily developed into a second unit. But by putting a 17,000 or whatever the number is, it really doesn't matter because it's a blind number that's added on to the cost of construction with no return for that cost. So you're eliminating what we really need is granny units, duplex, studios, secondary housing within the community. I do believe that we should look at the five and above, not going clear down to the two level.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gilberry, followed by Kathy McCammon.
My name is Gilberry. I'm speaking to the ND, or I should say the draft ND. The draft ND is faulty because it only looks at the impacts caused by the subsidized units and does not look at the impacts caused by the market units at each project, which are affected and, you know, directly affected and caused to have some kind of change by this ordinance from what they would otherwise be. There are significant adverse environmental impacts created by this ordinance. They consist of social impacts, economic impacts, and traffic ingestion impacts to both the members of the workforce and also to the residents of the city. And CECL law allows social impacts and economic impacts to be environmental impacts. An environmental study needs to be done under this environmental review to confirm that the cost of the in lieu fee is added to the price of the units and is not absorbed by the developer's profit. A study is needed also under this environmental review to confirm that many, if not most, of the small projects, two to nine units, are actually developed by one-time development by small mom and pop developers. The large professional developers generally do the bigger units over nine. And the larger developers generally are sophisticated enough, they'll, they'll do projects over a million dollars. But it's been my experience as an architect that a mom and pop type of an individual, middle-class individual, who may themselves live on the site, maybe live in a $500,000 unit, they generally think in those terms. And they generally are going to develop units that they themselves would live in, or, I mean, would be happy living in. So if a person lives in a $500,000 unit, they're much more apt to develop a couple of $500,000 units on their property. They generally can't afford to even develop, say, a luxury unit. They cost more money to develop. So a study needs to look into that and confirm that. Also, a study needs to confirm that many of the units in projects two to nine are actually purchased by members of the workforce. No matter what certain governmental standards are, certain nationwide standards where people maybe aren't supposed to pay more than 25% of their income, as a real estate broker, I can tell you that it's a fact that many of the market units in modest projects below nine units have been bought by members of the workforce. It's a fact. And it doesn't matter whether somebody thinks they can't afford it. The fact is that these people are buying these units, but they can barely buy these units. And the study needs to confirm that the fee, when it's added to these units, will then cause the price to be increased to the level that the workforce can no longer afford to purchase these units. So it's going to have substantial impact. And also, the fees needs to confirm, the study needs to confirm that a $17,000 fee doesn't increase the price by 17,000. Because, for several reasons for that. One is there's a 7% selling expense on a project, 6% real estate fee, 1% to closing costs, that's 7%. So to generate 17,700, you'd have to have maybe 20,000 added to the price. When you take off the selling expenses, it generates the 17,000. But on top of that, a 17,000 fee is an expense just like the cost of plywood or an architect's fee or any other city fee. And then you have a developer's profit, maybe 15% on top of that. And then besides, a new project can't just increase the price by 20,000 or 30,000, 40,000. just increase the price by 20,000 or 30,000, 40,000, it's competing with the other existing units that are for sale in the marketplace. Therefore, it has to create value to a project to be able to compete at a higher level. Therefore, a study would probably show that it would cause developers to increase a price by $100,000, because they might use 50,000 of that to provide marble countertops, or oak cabinets, or hardwood floors, something to increase the value to compete at a higher level with the existing units.
Okay, Gil, could you wrap up?
Yes, I'll wrap up. So the study would confirm that it would directly cause units to be beyond the reach of the workforce, which would cause a housing impact and cause them to commute, which would cause a traffic impact. And then lastly, Keith Clark, professional UCSB, states that 1.6 new jobs are created for each new unit of any kind. Therefore, under this ordinance, when you'd have 95% of the units be market-rate units, above what the workforce can afford, it's going to directly have a housing impact that the housing for the workforce is not going to be provided under this system. So therefore, it's going to cause them to commute and increase traffic and be a housing impact. And this all needs to be studied under the environmental review. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy McCammon, followed by Jim Cohan.
I'm Kathy McCammon, and I'm here speaking for allied neighborhood associations. I believe you did receive a copy of our letter. First of all, I have one question having to do with the notice for this hearing. On page 2, under the environmental hearing, there is one sentence that a couple of people have asked, what in the world does this mean? And I found I can't explain it to them. Almost to the end of the first paragraph, it says, "The maximum sales price of inclusionary units in employer-sponsored housing projects would be increased substantially, provided that all of the units and projects are priced at below-market restricted prices." Several people have asked me, what in the world does that mean, and how does that fit into all of this? As to our main concerns with the environmental study, we think there are a few items that need to be included in the discussion of the initial study's environmental review. We feel the proposed extension of the aspects of the original ordinance to development of small projects may well expand the problems of the original ordinance and even have some further negative impacts. We think it's very important that the city not discount these small units as potential workforce housing. We think more study is needed to establish whether the in-lu fee would not have an adverse impact by discouraging the building of units that are affordable by design. Also, what about units for the upper-middle-class workforce who fall between what the city defines as the top-of-workforce, which is 200% of area median income, and those that can afford million-dollar condos? We think that these points need to be added to the policy consistency and inconsistency section, because the housing element certainly has a goal of providing more affordable housing, and also that there should be in construction of new affordable opportunities for owners and renters. And also, the land use element talks about encouraging housing for all income levels. We just think that the potential negatives of adding the extra in-lu fee needs to be discussed in terms of housing that may be affordable for some of our workforce. The specific items we've mentioned are the adverse impact on small builder-developer and housing, the negative impact on the small developer, the one-time builder, or the developer who just does several small projects with small units. The imposition of this fee may discourage them. Also, the adverse impact on buyers. There's the potential impact on reduction of the amount of housing that is affordable to some workforce buyers. The proposed fee will probably increase the price of these market-rate units. And as we know, every increment in price causes the units to be that much more expensive and makes it that much harder for people to qualify for loans. Then, the higher the unit cost and the wealthier the buyer, the greater likelihood there is for an adverse impact as to the new prosperous owners needing to have more service workers who will have to commute. We're concerned about the effectiveness of the inclusionary ordinance in terms of what happens with the jobs housing balance. We also want to raise the point that we wonder why this amendment is coming up now. It would seem that all aspects of inclusionary should await further discussion of related items such as unit size, density, living within our resources, floor area ratios for multifamily zones, and, of course, affordable by design. All these items we keep hearing will be discussed as part of Plan Santa Barbara. So our question really is, why are we doing this little piece now? So you have our letter, and we did submit it for comments, and I believe you have it already. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Cohan, followed by Tony Fisher.
Thank you. For the record, my name is James Cohan. I will address one specific thing in response to what's addressed and one general comment. In relation to foreclosures that was brought up here, I'm aware of situations where banks have lent more money than the affordable resale price that would be established. In other words, somebody didn't do their homework at the bank, and they overlent on it. It's an interesting legal question, who gets stuck on that foreclosure? It's been argued that that'll set aside the limitations on the resale restrictions. I'm not certain what's going to happen, but I was somewhat surprised when I heard that. But what we've seen with the banks and lending institutions are doing, then it's not surprising. In relation to enforcement, I've handed you the definitive law. It's right there. And I referred to it before. And the city has a lot of opportunity to do things on enforcement. And the estoppel argument you've been given is rarely used. And I think the people that are abusing the affordable housing regulations, maybe should start looking at it more carefully. In general, I listened to this process here, and I'm somewhat familiar with the environmental process in SEQA. I remember when SEQA was adopted. I remember when the Friends of Mammoth initiated it. And I remember the concept of a negative declaration was thought of, something declaring there's no environmental impact. And I would argue, and say, this is an abuse of discretion. I've listened to what's been discussed here, and this is a complex issue. In fact, Mr. Fosstich said it's confusing, and the prices have been very volatile. I think this really cries out for a full environmental study on it. And to say there's no impacts and try to pass it off that way is an abuse of the environmental process, and it saddens me to see it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohan. Tony Fisher is the final speaker. If anybody else wants to speak, please bring up a speaker slip.
Good afternoon, members of the planning commission. My name is Tony Fisher. I'm the person referred to earlier as the citizen, and in the staff report, as the land use attorney, who spoke at the city council to, and caused this matter to be, unfortunately, instead of killed, sent all the way back to you to go back through the process again. I was interrupted in my presentation to the city council when it was decided to pull it from the agenda and continue it, and then they pulled it totally from consideration and send it back. I would ask the staff to go back and look at that tape. Many of my comments were made to the city council, and they do not appear anywhere in this description of the project or in the discussion of the environmental impacts. And I think, therefore, this document continues to be a fatally flawed process, even for the conduct of this hearing, because lots of impacts and lots of considerations of what is before you has not been looked at or studied. This document that you've been asked to review mentions only the change in units, number of units, bringing it down to below 5, or whatever it is. It just, that's the only environmental impact that's discussed. There is mentioned the change in the ordinance that has that 30% number in it that allows any project of any size to take advantage of that new regulation. Yet there is absolutely no discussion in this document as to how many potential units could be built in the city by granting this sort of bonus density if you are having 30% of your units at upper-middle. If you're an owner-based project, what happens to those numbers of units? How many units can I put on a 15,000-square-foot lot on the west side if I'm taking advantage of that provision? How many could I do today, not having the benefit of that provision? What does that do citywide? Because that change is not limited to 10 or 9 or fewer. It's a citywide change. And that has not been discussed or evaluated. And as we saw with the numbers changing on the chart from 2008, 2009, with price changes, you need to look at what happens in this scenario. If a year from now, housing is down another 20%, or if it's up 20%, what is likely to happen with these numbers and what will happen under this? And I would like to see the backup data for the numbers for 2009, which were released today. I would think all of that should be part of some public report, so we can see if those numbers were accurately and completely calculated. There's another part of the ordinance change that is not discussed in the environmental impact report. There are proposed changes to Chapter 28.43 and Chapter 28.92. Those are changes in definitions and changes in findings required to grant modifications. Yet there is no discussion in this document. And those changes are code-wide, entire code-wide. They are not limited to 10 or fewer units. And so what will those changes in regulations result in, in providing additional housing? Can I, as a developer, now come in and say, under these new definitions, under this new language, and look at it, it's 28.92.110, I do have it memorized, and they have taken out the limitations based on price, and circular reasoning, doing circular reasoning, have kicked it back to the definition of inclusionary housing. And then you go look at the definition of inclusionary housing, and they just say whatever is permitted by the policy. In other words, it's an automatic approval of any modification of any size desired by any developer, including the 30% units, including any, I mean, we are rewriting the code. And now let's get to the last question. Why is this happening now instead of waiting for the whole process? Because some have decided they want these changes in place so that they don't have to be considered as part of the general plan changes. We changed the status quo. We put in place these new definitions, these new requirements, and then we say we don't have to evaluate these impacts. We bury them in a negative declaration that doesn't discuss them.
Hey, could you wrap up, Tony?
So, I think this has to go back, you know, it's not ready even to come to the planning commission. I think you need to go back and have all of those changes, each one of them evaluated, as to what's its impact on development, extent of development, what is permitted under each zone of the zoning ordinance under these codes, when they're changed. And then you can see if you should have a negative declaration, an EIR, or whether you should wait and do it all as part of a more general review. This has been going on for five years, six years. The numbers change in terms of house prices. The impacts are now, it's very speculative. So I think you need to go, you know, this is really not the time to be doing this.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Mr. Fisher.
Go ahead, Commissioner White.
Fisher, could you repeat that, the number that you have memorized? Thank you.
Is the section. And the other section is 28.43.020 and 030.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Does staff have any responses to any of the points that were raised by the speakers before we get into commission discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just three quick points. One had to do with the comments about the secondary dwelling units. Secondary dwelling units, under their definition and under the zoning law, have to be rental units. And so this ordinance and the proposed changes would not affect any project that is rental units. It only affects subdivisions. So it really wouldn't have an effect on the development of secondary dwelling units. The comments about the notice, the language regarding the upper-middle income, or the fact that it would substantially increase the prices, that was not, that sentence in the notice wasn't 100% correct. And in fact, we have a notice that's being published and distributed for the next hearing on April 2, I believe. And that sentence has been replaced. It really refers to the 30% of upper-middle being equivalent to 15% of middle income. And so that's where the substantial increase language came in, and we corrected that. But I think it was general enough to indicate that there would be some difference in that regard. And then I think the really key thing to understand about the 30% is that unlike the 15% required density, the required inclusionary units that are entitled by right under the ordinance to receive a density bonus, if you provide 30% at upper-middle income, there is no entitlement to a density bonus. That's a big, big change. So basically, it's saying that an employer who comes in and proposes 30%, doesn't have to be an employer, but typically that's what would be, who proposes 30% of the units for upper-middle income, what it does is it exempts them from this ordinance entirely. Well, the right to density bonus is included in the ordinance, so, is the inclusionary ordinance. So if they come in with 30%, that does not assume any density bonus by right. It does not grant any density bonus by right. And in fact, an upper-middle-income unit does not meet the city's density bonus requirements. Just put aside the inclusionary ordinance for a minute. The city's density bonus policies predated this. And what they said is that the city may provide a density bonus for projects that include middle-income units. And the inclusionary ordinance was created afterwards with the intent of being as consistent with existing city policy with density bonuses as it could be. So the requirement was for middle income and to provide a density bonus by right to lessen the impact on the project. So that's where the 15% requirement for middle income came in, and that's where the right to a density bonus came in. But Mr. Fisher made the assumption, it sounds like, that those units that would be 30% upper-middle income would automatically be entitled to a density bonus, and that's just not correct.
Can I clarify that?
Mr. Fisher, if you want to come up and, we're not going to get into a debate. If you want to clarify your comments for the environmental document, then go ahead, but brief.
In the 30%, it's true, they would not be entitled to a density bonus. But the only finding that would have to be made to grant a bigger density, a higher density, is the new language that's in 28.92.110 being proposed, which is basically a finding that says, if it's consistent with the housing policy to do this, you can do it. This 30% number is in the inclusionary housing chapter. So if it has nothing to do with inclusionary housing, why is it in that chapter? I mean, the drafting of it then would be wrong. So... So I don't think anybody yet has charted out what these proposals really mean to have an understanding of them because they are extremely difficult to talk about and describe.
Your point, your point will be considered before the final mitigated negative, negative deck is brought back.
Mr. Chair.
Scott, do you want to comment on any code numbers or anything of that nature?
I'd be happy to. First off, all the code references that have been made so far have been accurate. Beyond that, there've been, we're dealing with a proposal that has economic impacts, economic and social impacts. Despite what Mr. Berry said, SEQUOC says this, "Economic or social effects of a project shall not be treated as a significant effect on the environment." However, they can be looked at to see a chain of effect that might get to an environmental effect. So where Mr. Berry is talking about the potential that certain segments of the population may not be able to afford a home because of the fee, and that that would lead to commuting, it's proper to analyze the potential for that commuting effect and the, the effects of that additional amount of commuting. But where Mr. Caldwell and where Mr. Berry were saying that this document needs to analyze the social impacts on whether or not an individual can afford the home they wish, that is not an appropriate topic for a SEQUOC document. Or whether or not the, this, this particular ordinance will affect the affordability of the unit itself and leading to foreclosures and those kinds of things. So staff will respond to the comments. I wanted to give that framework as to what is the appropriate analysis. The SEQUOC document is looking for an analysis of the effects on the environment. Economics generally is not part of that, that equation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I need to leave the dais. Could we take a break? Because if I leave, there will not be a quorum.
Sure. We'll, we'll have a 15-minute break and then we'll come back. Okay, we'll reconvene at this point. Does the staff have any other points they want to cover and answer to any of the comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion and bring it to the commission for comments on the draft mitigated negative declaration, starting with Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually had one more question pertaining to the municipal code section that Mr. Fisher mentioned, which has to do with definitions of modifications and the findings to make a modification being somewhat self-referencing. And I, I don't have the code in front of me, so I don't know if that's true. But often we add into our findings that, that we must also make a finding of sound community planning. And if, if that is something that we can add into the proposed ordinance, or maybe it's already in there, but that would assist in creating a finding that's really a finding rather than a self-referencing definition. And then, the comments, I, I find the staff's proposals to be, to be reasonable. I was on the Housing Policy Steering Committee when this first came up, and it has been a long wait. And I think it's unfortunate because it would have been ideal to have this tweaking of the ordinance in place some years ago. But this is the time that we're able to do it, and I think we should proceed. The reasons for fine-tuning this ordinance are just as valid as they were four years ago when the process started. In particular, the changing of the in-lu fees was much discussed at that time. And the usefulness of the fees, Mr. Fostich outlined a little bit what those fees would be used for. And those are something that the community and the city truly need. So I, I support the, the document and am pleased with the way it's turning out.
Mr. Chair, if it would be helpful to Commissioner's comments, I have an answer to Commissioner Jacobs' first question regarding the findings. The, the commission is familiar with the findings required for adopting and approving modifications. The, the change The change that is proposed affects specifically the fourth of the four available findings. In any case, a modification, the finding must be made that the modification is consistent with the purposes and intent of the title, Title 28 of the municipal code, the zoning ordinance, and is necessary to secure one of four categories. The one that you're most familiar with is the first, which is secure an appropriate improvement on the lot. The second is to prevent an unreasonable hardship. The third is to promote uniformity of improvement. And the fourth is that the modification is necessary to construct a housing development, and I will use the current language right now, which is affordable to very low, low, moderate, or middle-income households. That's the current language. The proposed revision will have that fourth criteria read as follows. The modification is necessary to construct a housing development containing affordable dwelling units, rented or owned and occupied in the manner provided in the city's affordable housing policies and procedures as defined in subsection A of Section 2843020 of this code. I want to point out that the city's affordable housing policies and procedures are the meat, the substance, to how the city provides low, very low, moderate, or middle-income housing. So while this revision to the, or change to this finding does change the way it's referenced, one thing it's doing is it allows this modification to consider the upper-middle income housing opportunities that could be presented. You still have to make the finding of consistency with the intent of the title. You still, in any case of a project regarding a subdivision, you still have to make the finding of sound community planning. So the revision to this modification finding really is to match up the finding with the various categories of affordable housing that the city views in its policies and procedures rather than the list that we're of low, very low, moderate, or middle.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vincent. Anything else, Sherman?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In part, what Mr. Vincent just said responds to what I was going to ask about, which is number three under 2843040. A three-upper-middle-income projects. Residential developments which propose not less than 30% of the units of development will be deed restricted for occupancy by upper-middle-income households to and pursuant, and so on. And then, these are projects that are exempt from the inclusionary requirements. And how does that all play out in terms of environmental issues? Or will that just as it comes, as usual, project by project, it will have environmental review?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, exactly, the projects that are proposed that qualify for this exemption would still be subject to any applicable CEQA review for the particular project. I wanted to expand on Mr. Folsich's comments. This proposal is more than just looking at a new income category. This proposal was also included as a response to a request from some large employers, including Westmont College, who were saying imposition, the way that the current inclusionary housing ordinance is written today prevents them from doing conversion projects for their faculty, providing ownership opportunities for their faculty at economic levels or sale prices that make the project work for the university on an economic level. What Westmont specifically was proposing was the purchase of a current apartment building, fixing it up, turning it around, and selling it as ownership opportunities to their faculty. However, because the inclusionary ordinance applies to condo conversions, Westmont was going to be limited to selling those converted units at prices that are at the middle-income level. Even though their faculty could probably afford an upper-middle category, and that would make the project financially feasible for the university, consistency or the application of the inclusionary housing ordinance prevented them from even proposing such a project. This exception would allow for a project like that. The condo conversion would still be subject to CEQA. The condo conversion would still be subject to the review that you, as the planning commission, already have for condo conversions. What would happen with this particular exemption is that where an employer is turning around, and it doesn't have to be an employer, it could be another, any private applicant, as long as they are providing this a level of affordability. And so that's where I dovetail with Mr. Folsich's comments, is that the 30% upper-middle-income category, staff looked at that and said, "We're getting an equivalent level of affordability versus the market." And that's, so I wanted to give that greater context to this exemption in answer to Commissioner Lodge's comment.
Okay, Commissioner Lodge, do you have any others?
Oh, no, thank you.
Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as I mentioned, I have sort of a stream of questions that'll mix in with my comments because I wanted to put this in a little bit of a historic context. My recollection is that the city had an inclusionary policy, I'm going to say, in the early '90s, something like that. Maybe you would, I know that, at least maybe your sense of history would have had that. In any case, and you don't recall that either.
Okay. Well, there was an inclusionary requirement on the books that was rescinded in the last recession. And one of my main points that I want to talk about here is the need to be nimble with this fee. And we're seeing staff make a proposal here for the two or three-unit project, that the first unit is exempt from a fee as one effort to acknowledge that the fee isn't applicable in a market rate situation. Frankly, these mom-and-pop operations often are sub-economic. A developer wouldn't touch it with a 10-foot pole because it's, somebody's owned the property for 20 years, they've got it under, or 30 years, they've owned it under Prop 13, so their tax base is low, and they can put in another unit or two with sweat equity, et cetera, family legacy. There's so many elements that go on in there that, again, if you're just talking about a businessperson who's having to buy the property, pay the commissions for the in and out, et cetera, it just raises the price up to being sub-economic. And I'm wanting to make sure that the environmental document covers, I expect it covers some options, but I wanted affirmation that as this goes back to council, I will be at least making, perhaps, or I guess it'll come here first, and I'll be raising those questions here as well. And I just want to make sure the environmental document covers these ideas as well. And I thought some of the testimony today spoke to some interesting variations of trying to keep this inclusionary program nimble and able to respond to the, what Mr. Folsich eloquently pointed out, is a host of variables, and it's something that is a volatile situation. The things that come to my mind are, number one, recessions. The city, as I say, and perhaps when we come back for the project review, we could have at least a reference back to that to see whether my memory is mistaken or whether indeed there was an inclusionary requirement 17 years ago, something like that. Danny?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner White, there was something called the housing mitigation ordinance back in that time period. And that was a requirement that commercial development, if it was a certain size, there was an actual formula that I think I still have somewhere that said if you were of a certain size and a certain type of use, like office or retail, then that translated down to creating a demand for a certain amount of employees, and then like 30% of that was affordable. And if you met this threshold of, I think it was, two affordable units, if your development was such a size that you had to, that you created a demand for two affordable units, or some X number, then you had to pay money into a fund, I think it was.
Okay, so it was a commercial exaction rather than a residential one?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that, thank you. At least there was something out there, anyway. But that was rescinded in the last recession, which I thought was an interesting response to a situation where we're looking around going, well, you know, there's been conversation today about, well, something's going to tip a project over into not being economic. Well, the tipping has occurred. We've got, for the first time in, certainly in these 17 years, we now have condo projects that are entitled, they are for the asking out there at fairly, again, relative to the last 10-year pricing, pretty darn good prices. You can go and get yourself a condo project to build just off the shelf, very unusual. So I feel like that if times are bad enough that the decision-makers could have, might have the ability to revise that inclusionary fee. So that's one, flexibility on that time, the state of the economy. Number two is, and again, I think Mr. Berry brought this up, and maybe even Ms. McCammon, very small units. Again, this is part of the, if it's affordable by design, is that not something that, I mean, you're charging somebody $17,000 for an 800-square-foot unit that's getting shoehorned into the back of a little lot? Or what we've seen some of, now this would, and I appreciate that this, item six here, would address the one-unit increment. But small units as well are penalized here, and Mr. Berry was talking about that, where as long as you're going to pay $17,000, you might as well put in more granite and dress it up, another multi-hundred-thousand-dollar worth, so that you can go for the premium market instead of going for the efficiency market. So that affordability by design, is there a way? Is there a way for this to come through in the decision-making process to be acknowledged? Another one is, I can see the place. We have a seven-unit, I'm thinking of a seven-unit project, I believe it's on Chapala Street, where they're very upscale units. They're beautiful, elegant, large units, where the $17,000 feels appropriate to me. But if this were on Lower Voluntario Street, where somebody's trying to take on a project in one of our lower-income or lower-value areas, that just feels difficult for me. It feels like it's hurting the incentive to take on development in an area that could use redevelopment and where values will never be what Chapala values are. So those three things, the recessions, lower-value neighborhoods, and units that are affordable by design, could those things, under this environmental document, be considered as we, planning commission looks at it? And secondly, council looks at it?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, with respect to that particular, I think it was a question at the end, that I would, I guess what I would say is I would try to temper the expectations regarding the environmental document. Because the environmental document is dealing with whether or not there are significant impacts versus the existing environmental setting and the anticipated environmental setting following the adoption of the project, the ordinance. In general, this in-lug fee for the projects for two to nine units, you're talking about, yes, it's a $17,000 fee. But as the project assumptions have laid out, you're looking at three units every other year, maybe. In the case of a recession, I would submit that that number would even go lower because the projects have to be presented and built and entitled to get the money anyway. So right now, your agendas are showing we're not seeing many projects coming through. In this environment, I would suggest that the environmental document's assumptions assume a higher-than-actual potential impact. But if economic times were to change again and we went back to the scenario we had a few years ago, we could expect greater generation of fees. But again, on average, I think it's inaccurate or a fair assumption that the MND makes that three units every other year could be potentially generated by the fees developed under this ordinance. So sitting here now, I don't think you're going to see a significant impact in any of the categories by that level of generation. So the environmental document, I don't think, is going to get you the precision that you're looking for. I hear what Commissioner White is saying regarding the ordinance specifically and its provisions. And the hearing that we are going to schedule for April 2nd is the time when we'll try to address those, and that's the time for the planning commission to provide its comments regarding the draft ordinance for the city council ultimately. So, but I don't believe that the environmental document, because of the significant-impact threshold, is going to get into that level of precision.
Well, Mr. Chair, I wanted to raise those just to maximize the opportunity that those things could be considered at that hearing, understanding I'm not asking for sections to be added to the environmental document and so forth. I just, as I've thought about this over the last now, it's been a long time that this thing was before as before. And I just, those are concerns I have that we want to, as I say, that Chapala Street unit warrants the $17,000, and we'll have that conversation on the second. Yeah, somebody used the phrase, "The fulcrum of unprofitability" was put out there. I thought that was really well said. And that fulcrum is, it changes with the times. And we'll talk about that on the second. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anybody else? Right, I've got a couple of comments. Just to preface it, we're only taking public and commission comments today. We're not taking any action or making any recommendations. So we'll do that on the second. I would say that playing with the numbers and the verbiage of the proposed ordinance, whether it's low-income versus moderate-income, that's the trigger point for determining. The in-lug fee tends, in my mind, to undermine the rationale, the validity of the rationale in your proposed ordinance and in the preparation of the ordinance. So you want to be careful that there's a strong rationale for why we're doing it. And if it changes depending upon the way the winds are blowing, then that undermines the basis, in my mind. I think that the whole environmental review doesn't look at what we've all been talking about from time to time. And that's the unintended consequences of the inclusionary ordinance, and we're now expanding it. So if we had unintended consequences before, we have greater unintended consequences right now with this proposed draft. And I think that needs to be discussed to some degree, particularly the possible disincentive of an additional... particularly the possible disincentive of an additional fee, I think it was alluded to by Commissioner White, several of the speakers, that by adding another fee on top of the already difficulty of funding and building low-income or affordable-by-design units, if we add on another fee, there's potentially a disincentive for people to do that, and that's, at least I couldn't find it covered in there. So those are my basic comments in addition to what's already been mentioned. Does anybody else have any final words? Okay, then we're completed with, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lodge.
There has been, there have been some figures that indicate that the inclusionary housing, coming along with market-rate housing, worsens the jobs housing balance, and at what point will the city be looking at that? I think that, that was mentioned here also. And someone, someone mentioned the figure that Dr. Clark used, in connection with the Regis presentation, 1.6, new jobs for each new family or household in a community. And depending on the income of that household, there are more job, new jobs created because of the services that are connected with them. And even on a one-to-one basis, that is, if you had 50% affordable, and as against market rate, you still are losing ground. I wondered when that, it doesn't seem as if this is the place to look at that issue, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Thompson, we'll pass it on to the Plans and Abarber team, and if appropriate, we might look at it in this document.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any others? All right, thank you, and Mr. Falstich and Mr. Berman, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the administrative agenda, first committee and liaison reports. Do we have any?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I went to my first downtown parking committee meeting, and I found it very interesting. They received a report on the travel demand model, which is also looking at parking, and they also received a brief, well, they're also doing a quite complete parking survey as part of the general plan update, of what the parking demand actually is. There'll be people going around and noting certain parking spaces and seeing, you know, just how, you know, how much turnover there is, and they'll be recording license plate numbers, and it really looks as if it's going to be quite thorough. And then on the, under the travel demand model report, the bridge report, which I'm not familiar with, perhaps you are, projected much more parking demand than has happened, which was an interesting comment. And the consultant on the travel demand model will show, as we heard, where it works and where it doesn't, and what might be done. It was an interesting meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the next item on the agenda is a review of the decisions of the staff hearing officer. There were seven items on the show agenda, the last meeting, does anyone have a desire to call any up or comment on any? We do have a request to speak from a member of the public on this item, Jim Cohan, representing Friends of Outer State Street.
Yes. As you know, I've been concerned about modifications, and one of the things that I strongly believe, and I think the law supports, is modifications, I don't think they can be done legally. I think one of the problems you have here is one of the findings, basically, necessary to secure an appropriate improvement. I've asked, I don't know how many people for what the definition is, and I get a different one every time. There's no, really no standards there. But since you've decided, assuming it's constitutional, you can do it and that, the way they're brought up to be reviewed is, it's just one little, short little blurb on the agenda summary. Well, there were seven resolutions adopted there. I looked at the staff reports, there were a total of 15 modifications granted there. Of the resolutions, one of the resolutions for, I think it's 21, Mission Ridge, it wasn't online, I called up the attorney that's handling it, she told me it's on appeal already, but nobody's adopted even a resolution, so it makes it all difficult for you to pass on I would think that you have a duty and an obligation as planning commissioners to overlook what these modifications are. We thought, when I initially wrote the law, probably, oh, I don't know how many years ago, decades ago, it was a thing to, I have a modification hearing officer, look at these things to lighten your agenda. Nobody ever conceived that you would be granting 15 modifications and a tentative subdivision map approval with this in one hearing. Now, I haven't extrapolated what it would be a year, but if you extend that, times, multiply it by 26, you're up like 300 modifications for whatever anybody likes, if it says necessary to secure appropriate improvement. And I would guess, my request would be, you bring up the whole agenda, one of them's already appealed, and look at it. I suppose theoretically, and I don't know why I'd have to reach my own pocket to do it, I could appeal every other one, and you'd wind up with the whole group here, and you could look at it. What hurts, to some extent, is several of these relate to the T-Fire. And to me, you should be helping those people out as much as you can, and to run them through a modification process and to require it be done, it would seem that you could find a non-conforming use or some other way to handle it that would be appropriate. But to require them to spend money on their insurance carrier, to hire an architect to process it, to go through and staff, and then I looked at the staff reports, well, three, two of these get categorical exemptions of the seven, there was no environmental analysis on the other five that were there, and I counted it when I looked at the agenda, there were nine staff people sitting around while this was going on. Virtually nobody appeared to oppose them except one, and I wanted to see this, and I tried taking paper out, and I couldn't organize in my own mind, so I copied reports that I could get. This is double-sided copying, this is what, the amount of paper was generated, nobody seems to care, it's an abuse of the whole process, it's gone to extremes that nobody ever conceived of. It's my hope the Court of Appeal will say this doesn't go anymore, it's not permitted. Nobody else in the state of California has anything like it, much less a reported decision. I think you kind of have an obligation at this point in time to look at it. We want to bring these up, we want to look at what the process is and see what it is, and they could be handled in an expeditious way. And me, as a citizen, why should I even be down here bringing it up? I don't really have a dog in the fight, other than the thing. I see such an abuse of what was intended, it's basically wrong. And then finally, from what I've read and heard, I talked to the commissioner and all of the, I can get ahold of, you've expressed some comments about enforcement of various things that go on here, and we have a situation here that these modifications, even if they're granted or not, they probably aren't enforced, but it's done very selectively, and that's perhaps why I had that reaction I did earlier when I was told to get off the dais.
Okay, Mr. Cahan, would you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, well, I'd just say, point blank, I would appreciate it if you guys would do it, so I wouldn't have to talk to the, my supporters and Friends of Outer State and put it in your lap to consider.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody on the Commission have any items on the show agenda they want to bring up? As far as Mr. Cahan's concerned about the numbers of modifications, Mr. Kato, maybe at some one of our luncheon meetings, we can have a little discussion as to how that process is going and see if we need to pursue it any further.
Certainly.
Excuse me, if I can add one other thing, is that this is your last day to act on these, and if you don't act today, it's all gone.
And, fine, thank you. 10 calendar days to act on calling them up, and no one chose to call any of them up, so. Next item is, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I too am concerned about modifications and, and just what, you had a little discussion with Mr. Vincent at a previous planning commissioner meeting, and I also would like to see a discussion of.
The discussion about modifications, if we want to specifically discuss something from the show hearing of last week, call it up. Otherwise, a general discussion of modifications is not on the agenda, we're not going to have a discussion, hearing about it.
No, I'm not.
And I asked Mr. Kato to put it on the agenda for some future meeting.
I'm just indicating support for doing that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
We do have a standard report from the show officer that summarizes all this information very well, and I don't know when the next report is, but it is often very educational to see them all summarized that way. So, do you know when the next one is?
The next show, the next, the next staff hearing officer agenda is March 25th, the agenda comes out the Friday before.
Periodically, we have a.
Report to the Commission.
Oh, yes, sorry, the annual report.
Seems like it was about maybe four, five months ago.
It's normally annually, and I know last year we were late getting it to you, I think it was something around September that we did it, so it would be around September that we do, that we do it again. I'll find out.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item is a review and consideration of the draft resolutions and minutes of the February meetings. First is the Planning Commission draft minutes of February 5th. Does anyone have any comments or proposed changes?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lodge?
At the bottom of the first page, the February 5th draft minutes, it says that the agenda be continued to January 12th, 2009 meeting. That was, been a little difficult since this was the February 5th meeting, and I think what it should be is February 12th meeting.
Yes. Okay, February 12th. Anything else on the?
Yes, and then a typo on page three, the second bullet from, well, it's the third line from the bottom, I'm sorry, fourth, number one, consideration of heights to the Eves, it's E-A-V-E-S.
Any others on February 5th?
And then the last page, page six, again, the continuation to February 12th instead of January 12th.
Okay, about the draft minutes of February 12th, any comments or questions on those?
Page seven, let me get there.
Page seven?
Um.
Commissioner White?
Item 11, could not support proposed modifications along Mission Ridge and Alvarado Place for the utility distribution plant.
Hmm, that's not right.
I would say something to the effect of, it's like you, because you agree with the reasoning behind staff's lack of support, something to that effect.
Chair Thompson.
Where on the page are you, Mr.?
Item 11.
11 and number 11.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's actually completely wrong, because as my recollection, staff, staff supported those modifications, so, so something's wrong with that.
All right. Well, good, we've added at least that there's something wrong, there's something wrong with that.
Can we get it?
Yes, we'll look at it, and we'll get it, we'll get it right.
Well, if we are going to approve it today, we'll need to get it corrected today, otherwise we'll have to continue it.
I, my recollection from the meeting was that the commission couldn't support those modifications because they were inappropriate. I mean, it was, the utility distribution facility was too close to the property lines, and.
And did not concur with the staff report, is that what was the point?
Well, I would just say because the, because the commission did not feel that the modifications were appropriate.
Okay. Is that in agreement?
From, that's fine.
Okay. Any others on?
Nine, and.
Yeah, I had a couple on page nine, go ahead, Mr. White.
Okay, 32. The Northwest facility is of concern. Anyway, I don't know quite what to do with that sentence, let's see, but maybe you looked that one, I see you've got a mark on it as well, so.
Yeah, my point was that it, it says it's of concern, but could support the project due to a lack of a demonstration of necessity. I believe the point that was made there was the Northwest facility was of concern and couldn't support that facility due to a lack of demonstration of.
There you go.
Yeah, could not support it.
Yeah.
I had that one noted as well, so.
And any others, Mr. White?
That's, those are my two, thank you.
Well, right below it on number 33, I questioned the use of the term industrial-strength central heating plant. It sounds almost like a marketing thing on TV or something like that, but.
Actually, though, I did say that.
Just put the central.
All right, well, then it's accurate.
And I think I also referred next to houses in the RH zone.
Okay.
If you could put quotation marks around it.
Okay.
How about that?
All right. Any, any others on February 12th?
Yes, Mr. Chair, back on page four, number one, has commented that the Orient Express is well-known conditionals in preservation of historic residences all over the world. That may have been what he said, but it would be hotels, I think.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Number one on page four.
So, instead of residences, you're saying it was historic hotels, or maybe historic properties?
Historic structures or, yeah, properties.
Historic properties.
Properties, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's a good change. And then in two, the line that begins evaluated by certain professionals and scientific, it says mythologist, that should be mythologies.
Scientific methodologies, well, fine. Okay, any others from anyone on the 12th? I do have one other one on page nine, after the recess, item number one, I'm not sure the meaning of the term there, that the project should be adjusted to reduce the adverse externalities that it causes on the neighborhood, is externalities impacts? Maybe external impacts was intended? I didn't understand the word externalities.
External impacts sounds appropriate.
I think it should be impacts.
Average impacts would be kind of consistent with our vernacular, I would think.
Okay. All right, anything else on the 12th? All right, moving on to Resolution 0409, anybody have anything on that resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
On the first page, I question if these modifications are stated correctly. It says a modification to allow the utility distribution facility, dot, 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 to encroach into the front setback along Mission Ridge. I thought that was withdrawn by the applicant, as was the same modification in number two.
Well, I also question that, but this is talking about the original agendized modifications, and it was during the meeting that the modification was pulled, and that is covered in the verbiage here, so I.
So it's accurately stated, and?
Yes.
That's the way it was.
It's accurately stated. The modifications, these are, these are what were applied for, and then later on, we go through, the resolution shows what was approved.
In fact, if you look at page three, item 1B, it's, it's, the verbiage is removed from that.
Right, I see it removed, it's just that seeing it there on the face sheet when it was removed by the applicant confused me.
Okay, any other comments on Resolution 0409? About Resolution 0509? No, I'm sorry, it's not Resolution, it's Planning Commission minutes of February 19th. Yeah, it's a long, that's a long one, 26 pages. Yeah, it's a long, that's a long one, 26 pages. All right, if no one has any further suggested changes or--
Actually, Mr. Chair, I was still looking in the resolution 0409 to find a reference to the outdoor fireplaces under the pine trees. And we had wanted the, I guess the HLC to review the landscape plan and the outdoor fireplaces. It wasn't in the motion, so it's, perhaps we don't include it here.
It was in the minutes, so.
But it was in the minutes. It would be easy to lose that in the minutes, and I wonder if there's an opportunity to put it someplace where the HLC is more likely to find it and review it in the landscape plan.
We would have to check with Mr. Vincent, but the place for it to go, if we were going to put it in a condition, would be design review conditions, which is condition 2B, starting on page six, it'd be B4. I'm not sure that--
Since it wasn't in the motion, it can't specifically be--
I don't, I'm not sure, that's why--
Mr. Chair, the--
Study or to evaluate.
We've, we've done lots of things. What I, what I want to be careful on is if, I remember the discussion, and there are two different questions I have. One is, was it a discussion that was, decided that a comment in the minutes was sufficient, and therefore it wasn't put into the motion? Or second, was this part of our discussion that occurred after the approval of the project? And is that, I remember we had discussion about some of the conditions and some other topics about the approval, following the approval. And so I just, I want to be clear on where, when that discussion occurred in the process, but also, how was it resolved by the commission itself? Certainly, the design review section of the, of the resolution is the appropriate place, if it's part of the motion.
It was not part of the motion, it was in discussion. In these particular minutes, the discussion was quite lengthy, and a number of, of good comments were made, so, but not, not put into the motion at the end. And I am just presuming then that the minutes will be given to HLC at the time that they are looking at this project again. I know sometimes they don't always get read, or they don't get put into a report.
I will make sure that they do. Normally, the resolution is the only thing that goes forward, but not, it's not that we can't give them the minutes, it's not part of the normal procedure, but I'll make sure that they do.
Mr. Chair.
The minutes might be helpful.
Another point to make is that this, this project is already on appeal. It will be before the city council, and we can address this particular issue in staff comment, and if council wishes to carry forward this condition as a design review condition, we'll amend the resolution to reflect that.
Well, the point of reference, it's located on page seven, under modifications, item number 10. And it was brought up during the discussion before the motion. Any other items on the minutes or the resolution 0409? And can I have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody have anything else before we're adjourned? That's it?